Good evening, I'd like to bring tonight's meeting to order. Could I have the motion to open the regular business meeting, please?
A motion.
Moved by Bill Harris.
Second.
Seconded by Flo Santi. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Would you all rise for the pleasure of believing and then may stand for a moment of silence. Please keep Annette and Annette Sacco in your prayers, she was a future aide for the ASK committee here. May I?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I have a motion for approval of the board meeting agenda, please?
A motion.
Moved by Judy Amato.
Second.
Seconded by Flo. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our first, tonight, presentation is our student representatives, Jocelyn Decker, and I'd like to welcome Anaya Green, currently our newest representative. Take it away, ladies.
You got a light?
Oh, yeah. Excuse me.
Hello, my name's Anaya Green, I'm school representative, I'm an elementary grade, and thank you for the opportunity to serve on the board. September twenty-fifth through twenty-ninth, Spirit Week took place, senior one spirit staff by margin of one hundred seventy-five across the south. Followed by the juniors and the freshmen feeling the change from the setting back. September twenty-sixth, Portervis High School hosted open house. September twenty-ninth, pep rally took place. September thirtieth, the homecoming social hosted by the Portervis High School cheerleaders took place. October third, Portervis High School underclassmen had photo day. October fourth, Portervis High School wellness at breakfast and activities took place outside the cafeteria. October fifteenth, sixth, the Portervis High School participated in county wide early dismissal. October sixth and seventh, Portervis High School drama club presentate- presentate- presented dial up and order at the Portervis High School auditorium. October eleventh, the PSAT was scheduled to take place during the school day and has been rescheduled to the twenty-sixth due to technical problems. October twelfth, the college and career fair took place in June. October thirteenth, progress reports were distributed online. October eighteenth, tomorrow, senior information will be held in the auditorium. And October nineteenth, Friday, Portervis High School vocal club will take place outside the auditorium.
Good evening, everybody, my name is Jocelyn Decker and I am the senior representative. I am in twelfth grade. Before I can begin today, I would like to thank the board for the opportunity to serve. On October twenty-first, we will be going to the honor flight at Super Airport. This was an opportunity presented to all students in order to line up. And they signed up and they're gonna go. On October twenty-sixth, we will have our financial aid day in the auditorium. On November fourth, will be the SATs held here at Portervis High School. On November sixth, will be underclassmen photo makeup day. On November ninth, the seniors' portraits, the seniors who have not had a sitting, will be taking place, there will be a ten-dollar deed for receipts. On November sixteenth, the varsity cheerleading seniors will be headed to Disney to perform in the Varsity Spirits Spectacular. Congratulations to all of our Raider seniors who were acknowledged during their respected senior nights. Varsity football team has made their way in playoffs, they earned a bye week, an opportunity to host the first playoff game at our beautiful home field. For sports this week, on Wednesday, tomorrow, JV and varsity volleyball will be in motion at four-thirty and six P.M. This is the senior year of volleyball. JV and varsity boys soccer will be at O'Neill at four-thirty P.M. Modified football will be at Menacek at four P.M. On Thursday, JV football will be in varsity weekend at five-thirty. Modified volleyball will be varsity in Washingtonville at four-thirty. Modified girls soccer will be in Menacek at four fifteen. On Friday, varsity football will be at New Falls at seven P.M. Modified boys soccer will be at Foremore at four fifteen P.M. And on Saturday, there will be a modified volleyball playdate at Foremore at eight A.M. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ladies. Uh, next, uh, presentation is student engagement at the Portervis Middle School with Principal Eileen Proving students.
So we have a, a video to start us off today. Put on by our video club. Maybe.
Yeah, we do, we do.
Hello, Portervis Middle School, and welcome back to the port press.
Hi, I'm William.
Hi, I'm Kevin.
Hi, I'm Elijah, I'm an eighth grader.
Hello, how do you stand, and I'm an eighth grader.
Hello, Tom, how are you, I'm an eighth grader.
Hi, I'm Mark, I'm an eighth grader.
Hi, I'm Anna, I'm an eighth grader.
In the middle school, we offer a ton of fun sports, court country for boys and girls, football, volleyball, and soccer for boys and girls.
In the middle school, you have the following facilities, the annual club, summer club, art club, musical club, and the little club.
We also have the extra lot is computer club, yearbook club, guitar club, drama club, ski and snowboard club, gaming club, and national junior honor society.
Next up is Naima, Maddie, Alana, and Chase, who will be talking about other ways that students are able to get in this.
Thank you for watching the port press, see you soon.
So we wanted to just bring today really quick to show you some of the things going on in the middle school, but the things that, um, the district and the board has supported us through. Uh, one of our students wasn't able to make it, but as you saw there, that was our video club ran by Mr. Wilson and Ms. Davis. They, they do this every single Friday, um, check them out, they're gonna be out on Facebook and Instagram as well. They have some really good dad jokes in there, so I'm just saying that it, it's good stuff, so we're gonna let, uh, Mr. Wilson's got something to say, we're gonna let the students talk.
Alright, so I'm gonna take place, uh, or take the place of Naima, who's supposed to be here tonight, but each day, more and more students are attending school because of our new bus distances. Um, and we're seeing a great change in our attendance, so to celebrate this, each day in the cafeteria during the middle school lunch, we're actually showing the daily attendance, that's what it looks like. So the kids can see in real time what the daily attendance is. Our goal is ninety-five percent each day. So in the middle school, if they hit ninety-five percent, they automatically get sent five dollars in our digital currency that we're gonna explain tonight. If they hit ninety-five percent twice in a week, then they get music during lunch on Friday. Right, and then they get to actually also buy music to add to their playlist with their class equity dollars that the kids are gonna explain in just a moment. So next up, we have Maggie.
Hi. Hi, I'm Adelina Presto. On Wednesday, October eleventh, PJMS welcomed breaking the cycle. This assembly was attended by all PJMS eighth graders. During, during it, speakers discussed overcoming obstacles in their personal life. Throughout their, oh, throughout their journeys, they learned to forgive and move forward. They even shared some advice. I feel like this assembly was like really touching, and I think everyone enjoyed this assembly, and it made some kids like very emotional because of how like touching it was.
Hi, my name is Evelyn. This year, the Portervis Middle School is using a new program called Class Equity. Every individual is hired as a student at the MS and receives fifty dollars per month. Each teacher has the ability to set up classroom jobs, awards, bonuses, links to the Portervis five, and consent bills. In Mrs. O'Connell's class, she has her own awards like class pizza party and nothing else.
And with their income, students are responsible for paying rent on their desk and internet bill. They can also use their money to buy items such as physical toys, homework passes, lunch with teachers, and pile a pencil in the face. This program is used by all of the middle school staff to celebrate positive behaviors in all spaces of the building. Even though it is fun collecting money, we are learning real life skills such as depositing withdrawn money, budgeting our money to pay bills, and other financial literacy skills.
So, we wanted to show you again some of the things middle school is doing, the class equity program, this is our store that we have, um, that Mr. Wilson runs during lunch. Kids are actually, when they say that they have to pay bills, they have to go in, we have an assembly to show them how to go in. They do have to pay for an internet bill, they rent their desk, but they get paid as a student every single month. Um, when they go in and do this in the program, I'll show you in a second, they, they have to add it up themselves, so they had fifty dollars, and then they get ten dollars for, um, a positive referral, they have to go in and do the math, it showed sixty dollars, and, and they'll earn the money. Um, they, they can get fined, so we're noticing that some teachers, instead of maybe writing a referral for being late to class, the student might get a five-dollar fine instead of, instead of having a referral for it, which we like that they're balancing it out that way, and the students are very excited about this. Um, so, I have a student account, I currently have a lot of money in there, what do I have now, two ninety-five, I was up to like four hundred? But, um, and Chase is gonna go in and kinda show you how, how easy it is. So you, when you click on the student, oh, you wanna send me a fine first, that, that works. So he's gonna fine me, go ahead, for being late? So it, it just broke the bank? Um, so it fined me, you notice that it didn't go down, if you can see it, it's two ninety-five. I got fined ten dollars, I should be down to two eighty-five, but I, as a student, would have to go in and manually put that, do that math. Um, let's see if Evelyn's gonna be nicer, she is, she's giving me a bonus.
And before you continue, if you notice the bonuses, I know they're hard to read, but we actually have all Port Pride Five in here as bonuses. So when you see the student in the hallway, in the cafeteria, in the classroom, you can reward them for showcasing the Port Pride Five.
So I just got ten bucks for being kind? So I made some money. Um, so we wanted to come here and say thank you to, to each and every one of you for supporting us with these programs. Uh, each, each thing that we've gone through, this class equity has been amazing, I was in a classroom today where a teacher had, you can have students apply, so he said he had multiple students apply for different jobs, the most popular one for his class, it was a science class, was to be a teacher's assistant. Um, he picked two people to do that, but they had to write an application, they had to go through a resume, he talked with them, he assigned two of them, um, are the teacher's assistants, they're gonna get paid every single week in his class, and he assigned them very specific roles, he had tutors in the class, um, so a lot of our teachers are assigning very specific roles for students to have and giving them real life application with it. So it's been a wonderful program, and we really just appreciate the, the continued support that we've had uh, here by the school board and by the superintendent, so I know that this week is also National School Board Appreciation Week, so on behalf of each of the teams here at Portervis, the PJTA, CSCA, and PJF, we just wanna thank all of you for your continual support, so thank you very, very much.
And, since you guys are showing your Port Pride Five tonight, the kids wanna reward you with some money. So, um, our aides and monitors have physical cash, so it's not just a digital economy. So students have to, like, get this physical cash, and they have to fill out deposit slips, or, uh, yeah, deposit slips and put it into their bank account, so you all get five dollars tonight, so, thank you so much.
We even have a teacher that said if a student earns a certain amount, that they'll get Hess's for lunch, I think that was the best idea ever. Thank you.
Next are our administrative reports, first, uh, Superintendent Schools, Dr. John Bell.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Tim was just, um, deflated when he found out it wasn't real money from right there. He thought we had a revenue source coming in.
It spots some, uh, future business leaders.
Yeah, for sure, holy crap. So it's great. Uh, the first quarter for secondary, the first trimester, uh, for elementary seems to be flying by, and as the girls had mentioned earlier, there's all kinds of neat things going on in all the buildings. Whether it be the wellness fair, the college fair, the fire trucks coming from the elementary school, it's good stuff, it's really exciting. Uh, I also want to give you an update about construction, where we are with construction, just to remind you again about the three phases. Phase one, we're looking at, which is the old middle school, which will become the new ASK. Uh, we're looking at substantial completion around May thirty first, with the idea that the teachers, all the teacher's stuff and all the kids' stuff would be moved in over the summer, so we'd be ready to start the school year. And it creates a domino effect, we move everything from ASK over to the new ASK, then the middle school occupies the ASK rooms, and then the high school gets back the rooms that the sixth grade uses and then the middle school uses, so it's like, we have to move one school before we can move another school, and then move another school, so. But everything's going fine with phase one, they're in the process right now of, uh, the biggest, one of the biggest issues we've had is how to get the balconies down in the gym and in the auditorium. Some people don't even realize there are balconies in those areas because they've been closed off for so long. Uh, but getting the balconies down safely without, um, compromising the side walls or the front walls of the building, those giant columns, so lots of steel has been put in place, and now they're taking down the, the actual balconies in both of those areas, gym first and the auditorium, and that's the last big hurdle for us before we can finish up. All the classrooms, um, what we call an area B and area C, almost all the classrooms are done in terms of the four walls are up, uh, all the electric has been run, the ductwork for HVAC has been run in all the traditional classrooms, and just the conversion of the gym and the auditorium and the classroom space is like the last major milestone, and then we'll be moving the inside things like sheet rock and paint and drop ceilings and stuff like that, so it's moving along fine, uh, but that's the timeline, like, the first week of July, we move all ASK stuff over, and then we start repopulating all the rooms here with secondary kids. Um, phase two, if you'll remember, that was part of the fifty-five billion dollar project, which became sixty-five billion. Um, that's the ball field to help the high school, the baseball field, softball fields, the new tennis courts, the new outdoor basketball court, the new baseball, softball, and soccer fields at ASK when it becomes the middle school. All playground equipment leaves, and we build middle school fields. All that will happen, uh, next summer, as well as the auditorium has renovations, I'm sorry, that's phase three, I'll sit on that. Um, uh, phase two is also, there's gonna be significant work in ASK to turn ASK into a middle school. So we'll actually start that in the spring, in your second shift, after hours work in the spring, and then, you know, because we have to turn the ASK cafeteria into a music suite, and, uh, we have to turn two classrooms, um, three oh three and three oh five into a tech ed workshop, and we have to turn a couple of rooms into home ec rooms and things like that, that you wouldn't have in an elementary school, but you'd need in a middle school, so. So we'll have spring second shift work after hours, and then, well, next summer, there'll be work finishing up that phase two project. Phase three is what the board approved last day, that is the turf lights and scoreboards at Connet, the turf and the new track at Chase, the renovations to the auditorium, both cosmetic and sound system, and then the relocation of the library to the freshman academy, they'll go from being two, how about two classrooms in size to being three classrooms in size. Three classrooms over here in the one thirties are all gonna become the new library in high school. And then the old library will become two science classrooms. Um, so there's some of the significant things in phase three. All this work is gonna be going on all the way through next month. So phase one, phase two, phase three, almost eighty million dollars worth of work, is all gonna be going on next spring and next summer, as we try to finish all three of them. So it's gonna be a walkover of a su- of a summer, to say the least, uh, but it's gonna happen, it's gonna happen, one way or the other. The girls had mentioned fall sports, they had a really good season, and many of the sports are having better records than they had in many, many years, and we were able to bring back JV boys soccer this year for the first time in a while, and I think there's fifteen or sixteen kids on the team, so that's very positive. I also wanted to remind everybody who's listening at home, um, and, and in the audience here, that it's time to sign up for winter sports, and in addition to the traditional, uh, boys' basketball, girls', uh, basketball, wrestling, indoor track, we're also, um, starting boys and girls bowling this year as an intramural, with the idea that it would become a varsity sport the following year. So we're excited about adding another sport that will hopefully reach out to a whole other group of kids, and, um, since we have the pleasure of having a bowling alley in town, we have a benefit that a lot of school districts don't have, by having our own bowling alley in town. Finally, we continue to work on the process of selling Thompson Street, uh, we've had some offers on the building. Uh, one of the snags that's really slow this up is that there's a, uh, zoning moratorium, a building moratorium in that part of the city. Um, so a lot of people are waiting to see what's going on with the zoning in the acre before they decide whether they wanna buy or not buy. Uh, but the plan would be, probably what will happen, so it'll probably be a proposition in May along with the budget, there'll probably be a proposition regarding the sale. I was hoping there would be one even sooner, but I think at this point in time, by the time we secure somebody, we'll probably till the regular school board election and budget day, we'll probably have a proposition, but we have to get public approval to sell the building, uh, just like we do when we do capital projects. And then, of course, we'll be coming to you, we're working on ideas right now in what phase four, the next capital project will come. There's lots of ideas being thrown around, everything, um, mundane things like roofs to air conditioning in the schools, and of course, there's other things talking about things like cardio room and swimming pool, and all kinds of stuff is on the table. So, people just have a heart attack, some people are prepared, so, uh, but really, uh, we, we are taking a look at the swimming pool, but it will really depend whether it's gonna be slated on or not. Because, uh, you know, we don't have five billion dollars to build a swimming pool, but if we get ninety-two percent million, that's a whole other story. You know, so we'll see, stay tuned, we'll be here more in the spring about this work. And, uh, that's all I have.
You got Flo picking notes up here.
She's still upright, so that's good. Uh, but no, we're exploring a lot of things.
Ladies and gentlemen, uh, next is Assistant Superintendent for Instruction, Dr. Mahaja Rockland.
Good evening. Our education professional learning committee met this last month. Uh, Ms. Carol Rapp will report on the ed committee minutes later on tonight. Uh, the professional learning committee met and reviewed the September conference day feedback, um, from survey results from teachers and staff, and overall was very positive feedback and some really great ideas for future planning. We also worked on the upcoming November conference day. Um, our elementary teachers had wanted to work on the integration of Wilson, um, foundations and just words into our current Raiders and Writers, uh, project, so that was one thing that we worked with our professional developers on designing. Um, we also may have room to squeak in some of our, of our project leadway training. Uh, Cohu Boses is hosting a regional conference day, the state for teachers and staff. Uh, so our other teachers and staff will work on, um, with their respective teams, um, on attending these workshops through Boses. The curriculum instruction portion of our website is being redesigned, so if you go on, um, you'll start seeing our secondary buildings, our high school and middle school courses, um, descriptions on there, um, up to date, our curriculum maps being linked, um, college course offerings um, from each of our college partners, our FTSS descriptions, and our graduation skill information. Um, our elementary buildings, uh, we're still working on yet, uh, but we'll have, um, descriptions of our instructional programs, our FTSS, and other highlights in our elementary buildings. Um, and the communicate, the community will also be able to access state reports and all of our plans that are required through state aid.
Thank you very much. Next, Assistant Superintendent for Business, Mr. John Kim.
Thank you, so I was wanting to project this up on the screen with the numbers being too small, so I will speak through this, so um, just about every board agenda has, uh, the board approving allowances and change orders, and I wanted at some point in flow ask, well, what, what amount is that? Because they're in se- they're in little segments every time we approve this, but where are we at? So, um, when we did the project, we embedded in each, uh, of the components of the construction, we put allowances in, and that added up to one point four million dollars, one million four hundred thirty thousand dollars. We've used two-thirds of that, or close to a million dollars of particular allowances. That's not additional expense to the project, because that was previously approved. A third of that is still, uh, hanging out there for us to tap into. Then, so it's not an additional expense, so when you see an allowance, in fact, I don't even, it's not even mandatory that I put allowances on the agenda because they were already approved, I actually do that just to show you where we are with the project. It's the change orders that, uh, really are the only things that really need to be approved. At this point, there are two major parts of the construction, that is Unimac and United Safety, uh, where they've had large amounts of change orders. Unimac, change orders equal about six hundred and forty thousand, and United Safety, one point three million, so it comes close to two million dollars. Uh, as John gets ready to support me, I'd say appreciate it. Uh, but what has happened is in the budget of this, we have two million dollars in contingency money prepared to take that on. So, uh, that's where we're at, and in fact, when we reached out for the extra ten million dollars addition, because it was a fifty-four million dollar project, now it's a sixty-four million dollar project, we anticipated that we wouldn't need all ten million, so we do have a buffer there. We have a little between the contingencies and some of the other accounts that we have prepared for that. As I showed in the buildings and grounds meeting, we're, we are in good shape, we have, we have enough money for those projects, so.
To just to add, if you're wondering who wrote the Unimac and United Safety, Unimac is the general contractor, their contract was over twenty million dollars. And then United Safety is actually the asbestos removal company. With a hundred-year-old building, you can imagine, uh, what we uncovered, you know, and what extra work we had to do in terms of the asbestos removal. Uh, because the plans don't always match reality, when you open up wells, they don't match the plans from the nineteen twenty-two. But that's where there's extra money spent, the general contractor, and for the asbestos removal.
Thank you, and, and you're right, when you're, out of that two million, or close to two million, it is all asbestos related, uh, majority of that, and if, if we were to, uh, have been able to predict this much asbestos, the cut, the actual bid would have come in two million dollars higher. So, as much as it's hard to say, it sounds like an additional two million, if, if it was anticipated that would have been there, these particular two units, Unimac and United Safety, would have actually been higher to take rid of the asbestos, so it would have cost us as much regardless, it's just, when you don't know about it, then you find out about it, it, it hurts more than if you anticipate putting in budgets, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, uh, are consent agenda items. Item A are the minutes in the regular meeting of September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. Item B are the minutes, CPSC meeting minutes, covers date range from twenty, uh, from June twenty-first, twenty twenty-three to October eleventh, twenty twenty-three. Item C are minutes, CSC meeting minutes, covers date arranged, covers date range from August thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, to October tenth, twenty twenty-three. Item D is a disposal request for expired ABDs in, in the entire district. Item E is a treasury financial report from September, twenty twenty-three. May I have a motion on those items, please? Moved by Kara? Seconded by Flo. Any questions, now?
Any more questions?
Yes, sir.
Uh, would the expired ABDs place already?
Thank you, Phil. All in favor on that motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item six are personnel employment agenda items. Item A is leave of absence. Item B is retirement, support staff, position two-seven, two-eight, school monitor. Item C is resignation, support staff, position four-one-one, head custodian. Item D, resignation to accept new and district position, support staff, position two-eight, four-seven, school monitor. Item E is resignation, support staff, substitute teacher eight. Item F is tenure appointments. Uh, Jessica McIn- McInerny, Molly Mancari, thank you, Edward Moore, and Caitlin Scherer.
Wait till they vote, alright? Actually, if you were here, if you'd like to stand just to be recognized. I'm like I said, congratulations, I don't vote, not on say.
Item G is an appointment vacancy. Item G is an appointment, vacancy two-five-three-five, curriculum coordinator, co-curricular coordinator, coaching appointments for the twenty-three-twenty-four school year. Item H is appointment, support staff, vacancy two-five-six-five, student hygiene stipend for teacher aides for the twenty-three-twenty-four school year. Item I is appointment, support staff, vacancy two-five-seven-one, position four-zero-one-nine, probationary food service officer. Item J, appointment, support staff, vacancy two-five-seven-two, position two-eight-four-seven, probationary school monitor. Item K, appointment, support staff, vacancy two-five-seven-three, position four-seven-six, probationary school monitor. Item L is appointment, support staff, vacancy two-five-seven-six, position five-zero-two, probationary cleaner. Item M is appointment, instructional staff, vacancy two-five-seven-nine, position two-five-nine, temporary English teacher leave replacement. Item N is appointment, support staff, substitute cleaners. Item O is appointment, substitute teachers and nurses for the twenty-three-twenty-four school year. Item P is an appointment, support staff, teacher aide substitute. Item Q is change in status, support staff, provisional probationary, position three-nine-three-four, educational services associate. Item R, increase of hours for support staff, positions three-seven-six and three-five-beat-four, food service officer. They have a motion on those items, please?
Motion.
Moved by Jason?
Seconded.
Seconded by Bill Harris. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Item Seven are action items. Item A is the lead evaluator of principals for the twenty-three-twenty-four school year. They have a motion on that?
I'll move it.
Moved by Kara? Second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Jason? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, our lead evaluator of teachers for the twenty-three-twenty-four school year. They have a motion on that, please?
I'll move it.
Moved by Phil Harris?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Annie? Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C is the approval, pupil personnel services, new vendor, Hudson Valley Water and Coffee Center. They have a motion on that? Seconded by Judy? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D is Fort Jervis High School, winter ecology workshop field trip in the Adirondack High Peaks region, January twenty-third through the twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-four. They have a motion on that? Moved by Flo? Seconded by Kara? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B is a scholarship, Christine Manfredo, Manfredo Memorial Scholarship. They have a motion on that? Moved by Flo?
Seconded.
Seconded by Jason? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item F is proposition for construction management service, seven engineers, phase two of the capital project. They have a motion on that? Moved by Phil Harris? Second? Jason? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item G is a proposition for construction management service, seven engineers for phase three of the capital project. They have a motion on that, please? Moved by Judy? Second? Jason? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Item H, capital project allowances and change orders. They have a motion on that? Now, Jason? Second? Judy? Sure.
And I just want to thank John for his clarification on allowances and change orders. And I just have a couple of questions. The allowances, I don't so much have a problem with because that money was allotted previously. And of course, the asbestos abatement, that's completely unforeseen. You don't know until you open a wall, and it is expensive. I just have a question about a couple of the change orders because a couple of them are, you know, over fifty thousand dollars. And I'm not the resident expert on construction, Phil is, but shoring, I guess, which, I don't know, my understanding is that's like supporting the beams, or I have no idea. But is that something that is unforeseen? Why is there such an expensive change order?
I think that has to do with the safety of the demolition of the balcony. So, you know, it's actually, you know, money well spent. I have to say that, you know, certainly you don't want anybody injured on the job. And, you know, after, I think, they surveyed the whole situation that that was felt it, you know, that was needed so that, you know, it doesn't all come tumbling down.
One of the easiest ways I could explain it to is that, even though the drawings didn't show it, when the building was built, picture the gym, the sidewalls to the gym, and it was a balcony. But most of us, well, we were at the school there, there wasn't a balcony. It was an enclosed storage area. But the balcony was built into the sidewalls on both sides. So if you just not go in and knock the balcony down, it's connected to the sidewalls, and you could lose the sidewalls of the gym and the library and the home equity above it. So what happened, they had to shore it up and then put in, they put in additional steel. They built new sidewalls and put additional steel across the front of that of the gym to make sure when they take the balcony down, only the balcony comes down. But they did not anticipate that anything would be interlocked. And it was, everything was built almost like Lincoln Logs, you know, where everything was crisscrossed and they just don't build up that anymore. But a hundred years ago, they did. So that meant taking down this could jeopardize the sidewalls.
Anything else there? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item I is a side letter of agreement with the Fort Jervis Teachers Association regarding annual professional performance reviews. They have a motion on that, please?
I'll move it.
Moved by Kara, seconded by Annie? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item J is a side letter of agreement with the C S E A, Unit seven-nine-one-two and Local eight-thirty-six regarding the addition of class title security attendant. They have a motion on that, please? Annie? Seconded by Phil? Any questions on that? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Item K is a side letter of agreement with the Fort Jervis Association of Principals regarding annual professional performance review. They have a motion on that, please? Annie? Second? Judy? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item L is a corrective tax roll from Sullivan County Real Property Tax Services. They have a motion on that, please? I'm sorry, I missed that quote. Thank you. Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, next are board member items, board committee reports. Buildings and grounds, not Adam Dean, sitting on Zoom. Next is D L T Committee, Phil Harris?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Your part liaison, Flo? Okay, great. Fort Jervis, Annie?
Yes. We will have our annual City Halloween Parade, October the twenty-eighth, at three-thirty. Lineup is at three P M. at City Hall at Twenty Hammon Street. Parade will end at Farnham Park. There will be prizes, refreshments for kids, adults, and pets. Also, we have a Harvest Festival, Saturday, October the twenty-first, at the Riverside Park in Fort Jervis. Join us for our free events featuring petting zoo, hayrides, pumpkin, bonfire, smores, face painting, touch a truck, and apple cider.
That it?
That's it.
Thank you, Annie.
Well, yeah, there's other things at the year.
Education Committee, Kara?
Ed Committee met on Tuesday, October third, and they reviewed the purpose of the committee, roles and responsibilities, norms, that is to make recommendations to the superintendent, reviewing curriculum requests and needs by building. They discussed Castle Learning, which is an online resource. Reading Committee was discussed. The purpose of Ed Committee was to review this year and Teachers College. If you follow the field, you know that Teachers College part of ways with Lucy Hawkins, a program that we're continuing to use, meaning it's a study. And we're going to continue to use it and review the data. So this is our review year for that. But we are supplementing the Teachers College Lucy Hawkins program with explicit science-based instructional programs such as Wilson. And we also have coaches, literacy coaches within the district. Bosse's instructional committee was discussed. Colsur, which supports area schools with things such as like field trips, where you can get a better rate, more expansive catalog, the individual arts assessment pathway for art students to earn credits for graduation. They can take certain classes in arts and music that will count for graduation and a possible cohort of students could be eligible this coming school year. C T L E credit was discussed for administrators and L's English language learners. There's a shortage of L teachers. There were trainings that were offered, and anyone interested, there were courses that were discussed. And the next meeting date for Ed Committee is going to be, I'll get back to you on that. Second Wednesday of every month, so that Wednesday, I'll let you know. Thank you.
Thank you, Kara. Next is Health and Wellness.
The Health and Wellness Committee met on Wednesday, October the eleventh. Erin Fallon, Food Service Director, reported about many wonderful things happening in the food service. The feedback about our new salad bar has been all positive. Linda List and Amy Weineck, two of our school nurses, reported on how our children are doing. The report was mostly positive, and there was a concern about a number of students reporting having anxiety. The committee discussed method of addressing this concern. Building leaders all reported about the amazing events that happened in our schools and that are related to health and wellness.
Okay, thank you, Annie. New York State School Board, Michael? Nothing? Okay. Orange County School Board, Bill?
Unfortunately, I missed the last meeting. They held a public meeting, but we will be meeting on November first, and this is going to be a special meeting. The Orange County School Board will be meeting with Congressman Pat Ryan to discuss the future of education in New York State and try to address some of the situations that we have to deal with. I think that would drive a lot.
Okay.
So I'll get back to you with another report.
Excellent, dear. Thank you, Phil. Policy?
We didn't, we haven't yet.
Safety Committee?
The Safety Committee also met on Wednesday, October the eleventh. There was a productive discussion amongst the committee on how to improve our safety drill. Justin, I'm sorry if I, Fauch? New Director of Facilities reported on emergency kits for the classrooms and curtains for the door windows for each classroom. The committee had a productive discussions about students and staff accountable during a safety event. Justin also reported about the upcoming fire inspection. John Kim reported that the district will be hiring security attendants for the secondary schools.
Okay, thank you very much. Next are board member comments, Judy?
Congratulations to all the tenured teachers.
Jason? Okay. Kim?
Well, congratulations to Ashley, the new tenured teacher, and Debbie Ford on her retirement. I mean, many, many years she's worked. And I congratulate all the retirees, and I wish them all the best as long as Debbie.
Michael?
Congratulations to all the tenured teachers.
Okay, thank you. Phil?
Not only is it School Board Appreciation Week, but it's also School Principal Awareness Month. So I just want to take a second to thank all our principals.
Thank you, Phil.
Yes, I'm ready. First and foremost, as everybody knows, Ed, this is on a flight weekend, Saturday, and I've heard it from a lot of people that they signed a commission for their children to come on the bus to promote this joint, seven, seven-thirty, for the flight to come in, eight-thirty, nine o'clock. I got to tell you, I want to thank Mitchell Conklin and his family for all the years that they put into this, representing Black Lives Against Stu, our veterans. They used to do it at the airport at the end of the night, and it was confused because they would stand on the end of the wharf leg, hand the veterans an apple. Now we do it at the meet and greet, and Mitchell made such a wonderful, wonderful speech. He got a standing ovation for the veterans. I mean, it was just that one. I tried to share it, I don't know if it went to Superintendent or not, but we'll get it to Mr. Marata because I know he had the podcast, I watched that with Mitchell. But just little things like that for our veterans. We had one World War II veteran going. We have two veterans from Fort Jervis, one veteran from Pennsylvania, I think, Dingmets Ferry, and then eighty-two other veterans of the place full. So if you can't come out, it's worthy of, you know, maybe you have seen the welcome home ceremony that we give out these veterans. And I think you, oh, yeah, the lessons are gone, huh? Okay, presentations for middle school. Thank you, thank you very much. That was, you know, I look and I see that, when you do the computers and stuff, and I sit here and I say, I am illiterate when it comes to I T., I'm sorry. I know how to turn a computer on, I know how to type and stuff. But what these children do, and this is what we strive for, to give these children this kind of education, I just applaud you, and I thank you for it. I thank you very much. Okay. Swimming pool, Mr. Swimming Pool. Now, I mean, I've heard it all, 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 all the time. Everybody's talking about swimming pool. Ninety-five percent funding, you know, I appreciate all that. What happens after the ninety-five percent goes? And we have chemicals, and we have water, and we have electricity, and we have everything else. Teachers, guards, this, who pays for that? That's my problem. That's where my future looks at for, like, everything else. Now, I, my concern is, like I say, you have to provide the chemicals, everything else, and you don't get nothing for nothing today. I'm sorry, I'm going to do any kind of grant, any kind of, you don't, you don't want something for it. I mean, it would be a blessing, because I remember I had to give permission, this board, I'm sorry, this board had to give permission to one lone student who went to medicine to swim. And I remember that, I remember we did that.
Right?
Yes.
We did that. And, you know, so if we had one, we might have two or three or four teams, and I understand that. So if they're from here, which they probably will not be, but, you know, show people written down what we could get for it, I think you're hunting. And I just said that because I know everybody knows that, especially when it's taxes and money and stuff. We have to be serious. I want to thank you for putting, Mr. Tim, for saying about you don't have to put certain things because they were approved already, but that shows to me that you are, you want to have everything out there. I couragefully comment, you know, just to let the board know that this is what has been done. You know what, even though it doesn't need to be done, you did it, and I thank you for that. And I thank you for explanations and putting it in the notice and stuff, just so we have an idea. Yeah, you could say, no, you did it right, but next time you come around, I'm not going to do it. Yeah, you could say, no, you did it right, the next time you come around, I'm not going to do it. You know, I'm not going to give you permission, I'm not going to say, yeah, you can do it, and I'll try to do what I can. But the common courtesy, and that's what I'm about, just the common courtesy, and you're showing it, and I thank you for it. I really do, I thank you for it. And I just thank everybody. Thank you for the gift. We all work hard, we're all here. You know, I don't know what to say. Thank you, everybody, because not one person does this. Everybody, thank you.
Thanks for the money. Thanks for the money.
It's swimming trunks.
I also just want to congratulate the teachers who earned tenure tonight, and I want to congratulate Debbie Ford on her retirement. And if you have some time on the way home, you should tune in to Mr. Marada's podcast with our very own president of the school board today, Bill Anafree.
All right, next, dates to remember?
Dates to remember, we have October eighteenth, an outdoor movie night for the middle school from six-thirty to eight in the high school courtyard. October eighteenth, we have senior information night from six to eight in the high school auditorium. October nineteenth is Portervis Middle School Picture Day. October nineteenth is also the high school vocal cabaret from seven to nine in the high school auditorium. October twenty-first is, first is the honor play at Stewart Airport. It says time to be announced, Flo.
Just yet. I'm going to go seven, seven-thirty.
Seven, seven-thirty, okay. October twenty-first is the, what's that?
I said out of the, yeah.
Yeah, no, I did go last year, and it's a great experience if you can get out there. October twenty-first is also the Elk Scoop Shoot from eight to three. Yes, I will be bringing the two-time state champion. October twenty-third through twenty-seventh is the A S K Book Fair from nine to three, the A S K Library. October twenty-fifth, A S K Book Fair Family Night from three-thirty to six-thirty in the A S K Library. October twenty-sixth, H B E P T A Meeting at three-thirty in Room Ten at H B E. October twenty-seventh is the H B E P T A Halloween Family Fun Night from five-thirty to seven at H B E. October twenty-seventh, Tri-Master One Pride Reports Distributed for A S K and H B E. October thirty-first, the H B E Halloween Parade at two P M. at H B E. October thirty-first, A S K Halloween Parade. Thursday, November second, is the middle school drama production of Happily Ever After at seven P M. in the high school auditorium. November seventh is the superintendent conference day, there's no school for students that day. November tenth, Veterans Day, it's a district-wide holiday. November thirteenth is the A S K Family Holiday Pictures, which is not open to all district presidents, so I think that's for A S K families only.
Correct.
Okay. And that's from three-thirty to eight P M. in A S K. And November fourteenth is the next board event, the eight, seven P M. right here in the high school cafeteria.
Kara, thank you very much.
I believe that's the principal president's. I just wanted to let everybody know that that was a change that was made, it's not on your agenda. But Thursday, November second, like Kara said, that's going to be the middle school show because of the football team having a game on that Friday. So we had to move our show to that Thursday. So it'll be Thursday, seven o'clock.
Excellent, thank you, Bill. Phil?
I just wanted to tell you that Chris has put together various packages for all of you for school board appreciation, and we appreciate Michael particularly, because he's the owner of Driving All the Way to Buffalo, the state school boards conference. So thanks for doing that, and we're going to double your salary next year. Two times zero next year, okay? Thank you, everybody, for what you do.
For middle school books.
Thank you very much. With that, I'll undertake a motion to move Kara. Moved by Flo.
I'll second it.
All in favor? No votes, motion carries.